We have prayer led by Councilmember Obie Johnson, and pledge led by Mr. Mason.
Heavenly Father, we come at this hour as honored as we know how. We come thanking you, Lord, for all the blessing you have bestowed on each and every one of us under the sound of my voice. You have blessed us both individually and collectively, and that's enough to say thank you, sir. We thank you, Father, for all the elected officials. We thank you for the council and all the department head. Let us continue, do what we can for the sake of our nation in the best of our ability. And whatever we do here tonight, Father, please, sir, let it be pleasing unto thee and decent in order. These are no blessings we thank you, in your darling and son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, and I wish to welcome you to this meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen. Ms. Goldman-Roe called to determine a quorum.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
All present, ma'am.
Right, I was there about six weeks ago, and one of the residents told me, "I see you on TV." So, I thought it would be good, and in order to say good evening to all of the residents in that new facility. We had our state of the city address on March the sixth, and it was well-attended, well-supported by businesses. And I wanted to wait until we were back on television again to do a public thank you for all the supporters of that event. We had an opportunity to share some of the accomplishments that we have implemented under this administration. And in these tough economic times, I ask that you keep in mind the accomplishments that we have made. And remember our downtown sidewalk improvements, the preservation of the historic district and restriction of peddlers. And I see the police jury is now taking under consideration some regulations to that effect. We have our gateway project, $319,000 that's coming soon. We, with this council, passed an ordinance that bans smoking in the park. The lagoon out at the industrial site is currently under work. The new radio room in the police department. We have installed new generators in case of power outage here at the police department and down at the garage. We have a 20-year layout plan for the airport. Somewhat of a commitment from Secretary. Receive the prestigious. We have received over a quarter of a million-dollar grant for sewer upgrade near Bastrop High School. We are implementing zoning. It is a work in progress that has occurred in this administration. We have affordable housing coming soon. And with the mention of that, I signed a proclamation on Fair Housing Month for the month of April. Had two gentlemen from two different eras of time to witness my signing of that proclamation. Ivory Smith, who has been a longtime businessman and educator, and very instrumental in affording affordable housing, along with Steve Perry, who has a project in the works. So, that was an interesting visit with those two gentlemen as they shared their dreams. Also, we have completed five streets, and certainly, and I'll shout this probably from the rooftop over and over again, DG Foods. So, those are accomplishments. Let's be mindful of those, even though we have endured some very hard challenges. And we still have some challenges before us, but I remain faithful that we are going to be okay. The ribbon cutting for 165. One, yeah, 165 is tomorrow at 11 o'clock. So, the public is certainly invited to attend that event up at Pine Grove Church. We are planning with the police department, the fire department, and with Ernest Lee, our code enforcement officer, to have a public safety meeting to help you be aware of safety tips, zoning, and regulations, and things of that nature. We will use our Channel 7. Are there any other announcements? That concludes my announcement, with the exception, we have Brent Elton, our airport manager. And I put Brent under announcements because the airport layout plans that we have, we're going to work harder to advertise what we have to offer. Brent?
Good evening. Yes, ma'am, and that's what it's for. We're going to try to market that airport a little bit better. And we already do have some interest in it, and that's something that I'm looking into now, contacting some of the airports in the area around the state, kind of find out what their land lease rates are, kind of get a feel for what the market is on land leases, so that we're able to market that a little bit better and give people a better idea of what we want in terms of our land that we have out there. And also, that the airport layout plan, we have submitted the final draft to the FAA and the DOT, and we're just now awaiting their yea or nay on whether it's good for them. So, hopefully, we'll be receiving that pretty soon. And I think even if I could get in touch with Mr. Lawrence at some point and, you know, work with him on setting up a lease structure, I guess, you know, to make sure that we're within the laws on leasing out the airport property. It is a little bit different. So, but, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to generate more interest that way. And we do have some land that's going to be for non-aviation development as well. So, that's something we can keep an eye on, and if somebody needs large tracts of land, we could possibly help them out with that.
How much acreage do we have out there, Brent? Do you tell the audience?
Total acreage is approximately 440 acres. And I would guess that we've got probably 100 or so of that that we could use for non-aviation development.
So, we're looking closely at what we have to offer, and looking at the Monroe Regional Airport, looking at possible spillovers from there, not that we're fixing to fly in corporate jets every day, but we certainly want to avail ourselves to what we can offer in this fierce economy.
Absolutely. And, you know, why not shoot for the corporate jets?
But we can handle some small jets.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, we can.
And some may ask, "Why isn't airport important?" Well, it's important for transportation reasons.
It's very important.
And certainly, in case of a disaster, we want to be accessible. Thank you, Brent.
There's, well, if I may add, there's been more than a few times that we've had individuals fly into our airport to visit DG Foods. And isn't it so much better for them to fly into our town, to go to places in our town, rather than fly into Monroe, drive through Monroe before they get to our town? I mean, it's the gateway to the city.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask a question. How many hangars do we have out there?
Currently, we have a total of three hangars. And two are city-owned, and one, well, technically, they're all city-owned, but one is currently privately leased.
Okay, so if we had more flights coming in, we could, you know, about this and I do, could we make it large enough, could we have more expansion, or how would we go about doing it?
We can, if we can afford to do it. If we can afford to put up the hangars, then certainly, and that's revenue that the city would get then. Right now, I don't know that we've got the money to spend on it. And as far as our grant monies from the Louisiana DOT and the FAA, that's going to have to go into more of like your pavement projects and safety projects first before we're able to get to a point to where they'll spend the money on things such as hangars. But there's definitely possibility for, like I said, the private investment, where someone's putting up hangars as an investment, and they're able to then rent those spaces out. And we've got more traffic, more fuel cells, and it just looks way better for the airport. Because anytime you can increase your aircraft count that's based there and increase the amount of traffic, the FAA and the DOT look at that when they decide on how much money they want to spend on your airfield.
That was my next question. Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Elton?
Mayor, I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Do you know who the FAA contact is, I think in Fort Worth?
Yes, sir.
That manages small airports, or do you know who, the name of that individual?
Yes, sir. It's Andrew Tominah. I can't pronounce his last name, but I can certainly get you the information.
Okay.
I'll fax it to him. I'll give it to him tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that presentation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Item number four, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Item number five, at this time, I will entertain a motion for approval of previous minutes, regular meeting, March 8, 2012, and special meeting, April 3, 2012.
I make that motion, Mayor?
Properly moved?
Second.
And second, are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, Finance Committee Report Resolution 12-1436, Bills and Claims for the Month of March 2012.
May I move for the acceptance of Resolution 12-1436, Bills and Claims for the Month of March 2012?
Properly moved by Mr. Locke?
Second.
And second by Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, Marshall Hill, Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development. We want to welcome you to this meeting, Mr. Hill. Appreciate your coming. I had a meeting with him earlier in the month, or was it in the March?
A couple of weeks ago, anyway. Couple of, it had been three weeks ago. Well, that's getting up. I'll just kind of give you a little brief kind of idea of how we got to where we're at. I've been dealing with Floyd Tomboli with the police jury on some issues on 425. And in some of those meetings, Floyd had asked, "Was anything we could do with NAF Avenue?" You know, because industrial park and because of the airport and stuff out there. And then first, I said, "Well, we don't, we have no way of expending state funds on a parish or a city street." But then later, I remembered, we do have a program, and it's working real well in another area. But, and the program is what we call right sizing, where if you look at the amount of state roads in Louisiana, we have an exorbitant amount of state roads compared to the acreage or the area of the state and the population when you compare it to other states. So, we have a program to where we would try to reduce some of our state roads in the state. And the best way we could come up with doing that is providing a program that would give money to municipalities if they had some projects that they wanted to, in their area, to better their area in exchange for taking in some of the state roads that we have. So, what we looked at, and I'll just give you just a kind of a brief overview of how the district's broken down. I'm the district administrator. It's in Monroe. We have the nine northeast parishes, and I'll show you that in just a minute. We have Kirk Gagian, who a lot of y'all dealt with over traffic issues. Melvin Hicks, who's in the back, who's my assistant over engineering. Donna Gillard is over my business office. Jeff Shapiro's area engineer. David Hohnit is my area engineer. And in this area, our, my area engineer just took a job in Baton Rouge. And today, I just offered that to another gentleman who took that, and he'll be taking over. He, his office is, it will be in Oak Grove, is in Oak Grove, but he's over Morehouse, East Carroll, West Carroll, and Madison. So, he'll be over all, and is over all, construction and maintenance in this area. So, if you have any guys, name is Gary Eldridge, and he'll be taking over probably next week sometime. And that's just, that's the nine parishes that I have. We call that Area A. That's over three west parishes. Then David Hohnit's over the Washtata and Richland. And then, and your area is that, which Gary Eldridge will be taking over. In the district, we have about 2,000 centerline miles of highway. We have approximately 870 own-system bridges we're responsible for, 655 off-system bridges, and those are parish bridges, and city bridges that we're responsible for inspecting. You know, we're not forcing anything. To give somebody, a municipality, a chance to help themselves when they can't. And I don't know how y'all are, but, you know, what we're looking at is about $3 million. And I'll get to that in a minute. But it's hard to come up with $3 million. But this gives an opportunity for $3 million to a municipality, and they have the ability to do it. You know, so, in another words, well, you would not have an ability to get that $3 million. Let's see. And I can tell you, from the top down, what we're doing is, we're not going to take advantage of anybody, but we're also going to make sure that we're not being taken advantage of. So, we're open with everything we do, and we'll give you everything we have, and you make your own decision. We treat everybody the same. What, the exchange will be a mathematical exchange. You'll be able to see, this is how we calculate this, and this is what we're swapping for. And the program, what it says is, we will undertake whatever capital road project the local government wants as long as it's federally eligible, like a repair, replace parish bridges, safety improvements, capacity expansion, stuff like that. And the gist of it is, DOTD will exchange roads if, and what we're looking at is NAF Avenue. But if there's a road that DOTD feels that there would be a good fit for a state road, and the parish or city was willing to trade, we would trade even for even. You know, if they were the same. You know, if you had a five-mile road, and we had a five-mile road, they were the same, we'd do an agreement, and we'd trade even for even. What, let me go and change it. What, the, if the proposed exchange is kind of what we're talking about, results in additional burden on either entity, the burden will rectify the addition by additional roadway mileage transferred. And the additional road, the amount transferred is determined by 40-year life cycle cost of the roadway that is being transferred. And in layman's terms, what that says is, let's say, we look at NAF Avenue for an exchange. We'll swap 5.7 miles for 5.7 miles, except NAF Avenue needs to be upgraded, which is the main purpose for the whole trade. You know, the state's looking at NAF Avenue as, you got your airport, you got an industrial park. It'll be a kind of a loop around Bastrop. So, it's a good fit for us versus some of our other roads that are, we have some that, you know, dead end, and we have others that just, we have other state roads, you know, a couple of blocks away, stuff like that, that we would like to get rid of. So, if it was a 5.7 mile for 5.7 mile swap, then that would be, that what we would do. Except it looks like, let me swap right here. I'll come back to that in a minute. What it's going to cost is about $3 million to upgrade NAF Avenue. So, to, so right now, we got a 5.7 for 5.7 trade, but then we got $3 million coming out of us that we have to get even somehow. And to do that, what we look at is a road that's in pretty good condition over a 40-year life cycle. We bring it back to today's numbers. It's going to be about $443,000 a mile today. So, we take that $3 million, divide it by 443,000, and we come up with something like 6.7 miles. So, it would have to be a 5.7 mile trade plus a 6.7 mile trade. So, you're looking at about 12 and a half miles of trade in order for the state to take NAF Avenue and upgrade it with $3 million. So, and that's kind of where, and for the program to work, and that's kind of where you and the parish comes in, if you elect to do that, you know, we will give up our 12 and a half miles of roadway, we'll take in NAF Avenue and upgrade it. NAF will become a state road. The other roads that we trade will become either parish or city roads. Now, as first dealing with Floyd, you know, we just said, "Well, it'd be a good, maybe a joint venture between the city and the parish to go in together, parish taking some, city taking some." And that's kind of where we're at. We were looking at, and just off the top, you know, nothing's been said. And I'm going to give you some maps of the state routes that we have that we think we're willing to get rid of or we would like to get rid of, and I'll give it to you when it's over with. But we had just mentioned McRight Street just off the top of our head. And McRight Street is about 1.15 miles from 165 to Cherry Ridge, which is a city part. And then the parish has about a half a mile from Cherry Ridge to 425. So, if you look at the other 12 and a half miles, that right there would be about a mile and a half of it. And what I'll do is, and that's what the parish is doing now, and we'll give you these maps. And then y'all can look at it and see if that's kind of what y'all are looking at, McRight Street or any of the other streets in the city. Let's see. The other, let me back up to this map one time. I know it's kind of, it's kind of hard to see, but the roads that are in green on there are the ones that we've already kind of recognized as being roads that we would like to get rid of. And you can see, let's see if I can just point it to work. You can see right there, that's NAF Avenue. And intention is for us to take it from 165 all the way back around to 165. So, it'd give us a loop, plus it'd give access to industrial park and the airport. There's, the program is out of Baton Rouge. I've dealt with three municipalities. The first one I dealt with was Madison Parish. First time I went to them, they took in LA 602 for me. It was nine miles, $4 million. I mean, it went smooth. We submitted to Baton Rouge, because everybody's in line for the money, and ours went straight through. I went to, I talked to Floyd about it, and I talked to a guy in Union Parish about it, and that was the only two. And Union Parish, up until today, I thought, had decided not to do it. Melvin came in today and said, "Now, they're moving forward. They want to do two of their roads the same way." Now, what they're doing is, they're just going to take those state roads in. We're going to upgrade them. So, we're going to fix them up, and then they're going to take them. And the reason they're doing that is, a lot of them are really low-volume roads. This takes up, it's going to require a lot of money to fix. So, if you're looking at a low-volume road with only 100 miles, 100 vehicles a day, I don't have the money to fix it up. But I can use this money to fix it up, and that'll help their people by getting the road fixed, and should last, you know, 30, 40 years like that. But that's kind of what we're looking at. Let's see, there from there, McRight Street's here. And we have some other roads, like here, that's a dead end that we're looking at trying to do something with. And this one. And I'll give you all the calculations. That's where we calculated the 400-something thousand dollars per mile and how we calculate it. And that's about it. We're going to be working with Union Parish on getting theirs in, and if you elect to, we'll get in, and we'll be in line. I was talking to them the other day in Baton Rouge. There are several other districts that are fixing to submit for a lot of these projects, what they tell me. So, you know, I would think the quicker we get in, the better chance we'd have of getting ours funded. You know, and I'll work with y'all and Union at the same time, trying to get them in. When I talked to them the other day, this fiscal year, which is no way we'll be able to get in between now and July or get the project designed and all the paperwork done, but they had $12 million set up this year for this program, and we used four of it for Madison Parish, and the other areas hadn't got theirs in yet. So, just to let you know, if we had ours in now, it'd be a guaranteed funded deal, basically. And I think if we can get into the first of the year, we got another good chance of getting them funded. But I just want everybody to understand, you know, y'all need to look at it and decide. And I'm not making anybody do anything, but this does give you an option that you can do. You know, and as far as, if I look at it, and I think NAF Avenue is a good state route if you look at industrial park and the airport, National Guard, everything that's out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Let me just stay there.
Okay.
I had a real good visit with Mr. Hill and Mr. Tomboli about the amenities that's out at the industrial park. And we had already looked at that intersection that needs to be straightened up because of the truck traffic. About 80 trucks, as I appreciated, Ms. King, in and out of there on a daily basis. That could increase. This was like a gift literally falling in my lap, and I got scared and just had to hold on to my seat. And I said, "Please, Mr. Hill, come and make this presentation to the city council." So, I feel that this is an opportunity for us to access other funds to help us grow and just guide us with the logistics that we need to work out. And I'm sure the council will appreciate hearing from you periodically, and will certainly make information available as it's made to us.
I would think what we probably need to do is have y'all get with the parish and look at these links and kind of decide what y'all are willing to do and what they're willing to do. And you can look at this map and see what the, what roads we're talking about. And when y'all, y'all kind of decide what it is. And one thing, if you do McRight Street, which it has already been lit and it's fixing to be upgraded, so you'll be getting a road that's brand-new. So, I mean, it's a pretty good deal there. But if you happen to pick another road, we can do work on that road also before we give it to you. But just remember that, you know, the more money I spend on it, then the more mileage you may have to take in. You know, if I had to spend a million on it, then I'll take the 400,000, so you get about two and a half miles more that you have to take in. Just letting you know. But luckily, since McRight Street's already getting fixed, you wouldn't have to, that wouldn't go into the calculation.
You factored in the red light on Marlin and East Madison.
We thinking that, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions for Mr. Hill? Okay, Mr. McKee, Public Works Director. Would you accept custody of this map and put it in a safe place? And as we work out details for the council members to review? Thank you, Mr. Hill. We look forward to keeping in contact with you. This is one of those situations where we do have to look at what's available to us to build on what we have to get where we're trying to go. So, I think this is a good opportunity to augment what's going on at the current industrial site already. Item number eight, Ms. Vicky Carpenter, Keep More House Beautiful. And after Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Carpenter, I looked at your presentation and some of the items that you have. I believe all those items have been corrected.
I talked to Willie McKee, and that's not really the reason I'm here. The reason I'm here is to show what vandalism has done to the park. I think I told Willie that 75% of those photographs of things that are already been repaired or corrected. I just wanted to show the city council and you what vandalism has done to our parks and what continues to be done. May I begin my presentation?
Absolutely, and I wanted to make that point to the credit of our Public Works Department folks who may be watching, that they would not feel any ill will towards that work that they do on a daily basis.
No, I was going to explain that. My name is Vicky Carpenter, and I'm here on behalf of Keep More House Beautiful and the Dixie League. First of all, I want to thank you for everything you did last year to pass the tobacco ban. It's a beautiful story to tell. I think you ought to pat yourself on the back, and we're going to move forward. Also, I want to thank you for all the work you did for the cleanup day we had on March 31st. You were there to help us with dirt, with manpower, with everything that we requested, and I do appreciate that. The third thing I want to thank you for is giving me the opportunity to be here to discuss with you about the future of our parks. I also want to thank you and congratulate you on your certificate of appreciation that you're going to be getting on Saturday from the campaign for Tobacco-Free Louisiana, or Tobacco-Free Living, forgive me. There's going to be a lot of activities going on at the park. It's going to be an exciting day. There's going to be free food for the first 100 people, pony rides, even the, it's going to be covered by the radio. There's going to be prizes, and they're going to give away Dixie youth uniforms. They're going to have jumpers and bounce houses for the kids. And of course, they're going to make the presentation to you, the city council, and to the mayor, and I hope y'all can be there. They're spending a lot of money on us. They're very proud of us. They're spending a lot of money on us, they're very proud of us, and they're gonna promote it in the northeast Louisiana region because we are setting an example. You should be very proud. I'm gonna show you some improvements, what we've made at the park since last year. Then this sign, I think, has already been replaced with another one that says, "A Hundred Percent Tobacco-Free Park." That was at the suggestion of Jennifer Hanlon, who is over the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Living. Here's another sign that's being put up, it's already been put up by Mike Riles. And what's so ironic, ironic about this is, he's a coach, as I understand it, for the Dixie League, and he's a smoker. So we're very proud. Also, this is a picture of the cleanup we had on March the thirty-first, where everybody pitched in, the city of Bastrop, the sheriff's department. We made a lot of improvements, we're very proud. And of course, this is one of your city workers. I'm sorry, I don't know his name. He's a, they were all very helpful, and I can't say enough, and how proud I am. But we've made some major steps, but we still have a, a major issue to address, and that's vandalism. Unfortunately, we cannot afford the luxury of leaving our parks open twenty-four hours a day. It's welcome to vandalism and crime, and these are just a few of the examples. This is a busted door at one of the restrooms. There's a broken windows at the restrooms. This is where they've broken out a window in the press box. And then they stole the air conditioner. This is where they busted the light fixtures. And by the way, I've applied for some money to help with the restroom, and they're supposed to, it's through Lowe's. I should know something next week, I hope, anyway. And it won't be enough to do a major renovation of the restrooms, but it will help. Here's another light fixture, and they've defaced signs. Here's one they've destroyed. Here's another defaced sign. And of course, they've destroyed two benches, maybe more. Here's where they even tore up the street light. I've, by the way, we've contacted Energy, they're gonna repair that. There's three of them, and they, uh, should be done by the end of the week, they promised me. Cindy Gordon, y'all probably know her. This is where they've shown disrespect, disrespect for the parks. They couldn't care less. All they care about is partying and littering, and they don't care about the expense, or the time, or the headache that they're causing in the city of Bastrop. Here's where it's party time. Their beer bottles are in the park. Remember, they can just walk in, they can do anything they want, all night long. Now, this had to be explained to me. This is a pair of tennis shoes that's on a power line that's over the RV park area. From what I've been told, now, this is just, I don't know if it's fact, but this is a signal that there's drugs in the area. This, of course, has been taken down, just like the mayor said, a lot of this has already been repaired and corrected, and this is down. This is probably the photograph that's caused the most con, comments. This has already been taken care and addressed as well. But to show what they're capable of doing, this is what they put in our park, live news on the sign. This is, uh, an example of how they've destroyed the restrooms. They have tore up the walls, the li, the fixtures, everything, and y'all have been very kind to replace them over and over again. And out of respect for y'all, I'm not gonna show you the rest of the pictures. They're disgusting, embarrassing, uh, for the whole community. When we have our visitors come in for tournaments, it's awful. It, it's not making a very positive statement about our priorities. This is it at East Madison Park. This is our gazebo. Many people have lots of good memories, including me. I went to many a birthday party there, and you see what they've done to it. Personally, this is what Keep More House Beautiful and the Dixie League believe. We believe it's time to take our park back from the thugs. They've had it, and they, they're destroying it. It's an ongoing proj, project for them. I'd like to make four proposals, and I want you to realize that we know this will not solve the problem, but it will help greatly. Number one, right now, there's several, I don't know, Willie probably can tell you how many restrooms at the park. In our mind, we can't afford that a luxury anymore. I think we ought to have one restroom facility there, and lock the others and put signs on the doors that say, "Out of Order." I think the sign is mandatory because if the door is locked, it's just like, they feel like they've got a busted in to get in. I don't know that the sign, "Out of Order," will help, but it, it can't hurt. And I think this restroom facility should be centrally located in the park. Again, this is a cost-saving matter. Also, uh, I believe that the restrooms should be locked. The one facility should be locked every night. And I think it would be smart to ask, this year, they leased out the concession stand. I think it would be smart to ask the leaseholder to lock the restroom when he locks the concession stand every night. The third one is probably the one that's gonna have the most impact on the improvements at the park. And that is to lock East Madison Park and Carter Park each night from nine PM until eight AM in the morning. And those times are flexible. Uh, that's just a good starting point. I think, um, special arrangements will have to be made for tournaments that come in, and let's hope there's many tournaments. That means lots of fun, number one. Number two, it does bring revenue for the city. On my fourth and final proposal, I'd like to propose that all the current lighting is repaired. And I think that will help with crime and being able to see what's going on in the park. I'm fairly certain that there is a USDA grant out there through Clarence Hawkins that may can help us with the lighting. I've put in a request to a lady named Cheryl Rogers in Ele, in Monroe, and I haven't heard back from her yet. But it's, if she can help us, there's a lady in Alexandria that may can help us. And we can find out more about what's available for funding to repair the lighting, because there are a lot of light receptacles, or, or, just receptacles that are broken off. They're dangerous, they're a liability, and they need to be repaired before we're sued. A lot of people may ask, why do we want to do this? Why do we want to fix or repair the parks? There are thirteen reasons that I can name easily. I'm gonna read them to you. As most of you know, we get a, the city of Bastrop gets a two point five six parks and recreation mill tax. We can use that tax money more efficiently if we lock the parks and takes advantage of possibly the rest of those proposals. We can reduce ballfield maintenance by the Dixie League. We can reduce their costs by the Dixie League for maintaining the, the ballfields. Right now, just like, keep more, speaking on behalf of Keep More House Beautiful, I, I'm kind of hesitant to invest a lot of our hard-earned funds in the park because overnight it can be destroyed. And I'm sure the city feels the same way. I can't blame anybody, the Dixie League or anybody, for not, you know, being hesitant to put any, the first penny in it. Of course, they will also reduce, uh, park equipment and supply costs by the city of Bastrop. It will improve, it will be improvement in park maintenance time efficiency by the city of Bastrop. It will reduce park labor costs by the city of Bastrop. It's gonna reduce park vandalism and crime. Also, it will be promotion of athletic tournaments by providing well-maint, providing a well-maintained facility. It also will create more community pride in the parks. Right now, uh, I think people have lost pride in it. They don't realize what they have and the potential they have there, the park has. They're beautiful, both of them. All of our parks are beautiful. Not every city has that potential to have parks like we do. Okay, if we're able to have one really nice baseball facility or parks facility, I believe the sales and concession stands will increase because there'll be more activity. Also, from Keep More House Beautiful, I had to put this in here, it's gonna reduce the littering if you lock the parks. And also, it's gonna make the park prettier. Again, I want to make the statement that, uh, this is not gonna solve the problem, but I do believe we don't have the luxury anymore of having, we cannot afford it. To have the luxury of leaving the park open twenty-four hours a day. We cannot afford to have as many restrooms as we do now. So those are my two primary proposals, that we can do something about that. Of course, the increased lighting would be great, that would help as well. Also, Travis Holly was very active in the cleanup. He brought four, maybe five helpers, and they stayed for two and a half, three hours. One of the comments he made when he left was, "You need some more trash receptacles." And after talking to him after that, he said he'd be happy to pay for two trash receptacles, like Willie McKee has requested, with the caps and the shoots. They're very durable. We have two out there now that Keep More House Beautiful has paid for. And I talked to the people that sold us those two trash receptacles years ago, that still look good and are holding up well. And they said that they don't, those are fifty-gallon, they don't make those anymore, but they make a forty-five-gallon trash receptacle that looks like it, and it's made from the same materials. As a ballpark figure, I asked them for a ten, for a quote for ten trash receptacles. Of course, two of those would be paid by, by Travis Holly, paid for by Travis Holly. And this is the quote they gave me, and I'd like for the city to consider, uh, paying for the other eight. Also, I'd like to give you a copy of the flyer that's, uh, gives you more information about the celebration on Saturday.
May I give Mr. Morgan?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I made some notes as you were, were speaking, and I'm gonna ask Mr. McKee, Public Works Director, and Doug Lawrence, to address some of the requests that you've made. I take it you have completed your presentation?
I have, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your passion for Keep More House Beautiful.
Together, we can make it, as a team.
The, Mr. McKee, if you'll come, we've talked about some things, and, and we all know that the budget is a challenge. We've worked very hard in the last few years, trimmed over a million dollars off the budget, and, and the jury's still out on how much more we're gonna have to cut. And we recognize we're gonna have to make some more cuts, and the department here is already prepared for that. So we spend quite a bit of time looking at budget and money and, and how to best serve the citizens. I think we have a point of concern in terms of locking up a public facility that's designed for public access. So, Mr. Lawrence, if you'll start thinking about that as Mr. McKee makes a presentation in terms of all of the parks. And the, the problem that I believe we're having is not just a city problem. It's, it's a problem that is shared, and, and it's a solution that needs to be shared by others. But I just don't know how locking off controls one aspect but denies another. So, Mr. McKee, if you will talk about the cost associated as we explore what Ms. Carpenter is asking of the city.
Okay, Mayor, council members. I guess the first question I would have, are we just talking about Carter and East Madison, or are we talking about all the parks we have? But if we limit ourselves to Carter and East Madison, and let's take Carter Park first. My concern is the RV park. Do we, do we, do we separate it from the rest of the park? Because right now, they are getting ready to have, uh, an event at the municipal center. And I'm, I'm gonna guess that there's gonna be an overflow from the parking right in front of the center, all the way across in front of RV Park. Now, if we, either we, if we lock that at night, we have to open it back up. Or, uh, if we're gonna fence off that area from the rest of the park so we don't have to lock it, my rough estimate is about ten thousand dollars. When you, when you, when you consider buying four more gates and, and commercial fencing six feet high. That's only at six feet high. Now, with regard to the cost at East Madison. If you'll visualize East Madison for just a minute, we have, we have East Madison Park, but we also have a council on aging. So we'll have to separate the council on aging from East Madison Park with fencing. That's also six foot high. And I would recommend that we go eight foot, but, but we have six-foot-high fence out there now. There'll be a grand total of about six more gates added, and at the basketball court, do we want to continue to let the kids play basketball at night, or do we want to stop them from playing basketball? If we're gonna continue to let them play, we'll have to separate that from the rest of the park. That cost is about fifteen thousand dollars. And, and, and of course, I, I, I just moved on from the idea that whether we will concentrate on all the parks at one time or just these two parks.
Well, and that's, that's a very good point that you make. As city officials, we have to be mindful that we, of, of being balanced in our approach to addressing the problems, uh, in all of the parks. And they may be greater in some parks than others, and certainly, we have to respect that factor. Mr. Lawrence, I'm gonna ask if you would address the legal aspect of locking up a, a park, or any ramifications associated with that from a legal standpoint?
As I appreciated, the, the objective was to prevent vandalism, I guess internally, with inside of the, inside of the buildings. You know, there may be some things that we can do al, along those lines in terms of locking doors to present, prevent access. But I really would want to look at that on a building by building or a facility by facility basis, and get a clear understanding of the entire use of each individual building. So, I would say that, that, uh, that we shouldn't take a blanket approach and say, no, you can't. But it really depends on each one of the individual facilities, and how they are used, what purpose they serve, uh, before we're able to, to make that decision or determination.
Okay. Also, Ms. Carpenter, let me ask you this question. Is there a particular time of occurrence, and maybe this is a question that the chief can answer, the chief Black? Have we gotten reports of vandalism in the parks at any specific timeframe? Thank you, Mr. McKee.
May, may I add one thing?
Sure.
Two point five one mills, as of day before yesterday, had produced, had produced one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in tax revenue. My budget is, for recreation, four hundred and ninety-three thousand. So it's supplemented by this general fund.
Okay. Mr. McKee, if you'll stay there, we may not be finished with you. I just wanted to ask the chief, have we gotten any reports of a specific timeframe that these occurrences?
That's pretty hard to really determine, because usually we'll get it after the fact, a report. And if you get it in the morning, or, or Saturday morning, or whenever, a report, it could have occurred anytime during the night, or it could, could have occurred during the activities that are going on themselves. In other words, some kids could have gone into a bathroom during the, during baseball games and what have you, and damaged the insides of the restrooms at that time. So it's really difficult to determine exactly when it occurs.
Okay. Possibly an opportunity to, to monitor vandalism a little more is the beef of patrol at various times to, to kind of?
Yes, ma'am, but it's still, it's a hit and miss, because you don't ever know when it occurs, because usually, probably a lot of the littering or some of the things occur during the activities, or, or during the same time of the activities. You know, at night, when you're driving by the park, you don't see anyone. Most of the time, the car, we, actually, we have checked the park here, uh, a couple of weeks ago, we have special detail. And, uh, there was no one at the park at night during the times that we were checking it. So I, I kind of feel like a lot of the activities or a lot of the incidences occur during the daytime, the morning, and early evening, when, when there are a lot of people at the park.
Ms. Carpenter, we don't want you to lose heart with your, your passion and your effort. We just have to find a way to collectively work together with, with multiple agencies to see what we can do. And certainly, if, any grant funds, and I'm, I'm constantly monitoring information that comes to me. If we can access some money to do some things, we'll do it. Mr. McKee, do you have any other points in the budget analysis that you have? And when we look at, uh, how And when we look at half a million dollars for parks and recreation and, and get, and that 2.5 at $173,000, basically, the entertainment for the city, offering an amenity, something, somewhere for the children to go. On the other side of the argument, I get people say, "We don't have anything for the children to do, so if we lock the, the park up, I know East Madison Park, they play basketball until, depending on daylight saving time."
No, it, it's the light out there. They, they play 12, 1 o'clock in the morning.
So we just need to probably take bite-sized pieces and just look at what we can do, assess the restroom case-by-case situation, just do an inventory, and take into consideration what we can do in, in bite-sized portions. But when we look at, what was the total cost, Mr. McKee, of, um, making these upgrades?
Total estimated cost of making the upgrades is between, depending on, on labor costs at the time, some, anywhere between 25 and 30,000 dollars.
Okay. What's the cost of the, estimated cost of the damages that the repairs?
That we repaired?
Just roughly?
Seven, eight thousand dollars.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Carpenter? Yes?
While she's coming, Mayor, one of the, one thing that I would mention, you know, you and I and the chief had a collective discussion about something a little bit earlier today, that might be a possible way to, to address this. I don't wanna speak about it in the public domain, but if, if you know what I mean, it, it may represent a way for us to track some of this vandalism activity. So we may have a, maybe we'll have a discussion with the chief about that.
Okay, that's a good idea, Mr. Lawrence. Chief Black, keep that in mind. Okay, Ms. Carpenter, and as you come, council members, do you have any comments and thoughts you wanna share on this particular point of interest?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
We can't reveal it. At Carter Park out here, not Carter, but, uh, East Madison Park, the fence is, is not six feet tall, you know? It, it's not gonna stop any thugs, as you say, from the vandalism, because they could jump the fence. And, and, and most, most case part of, if, if you do decide to just gonna lock all the gates, you're gonna probably create an atmosphere where they might turn thuggish, or, or create the just vandalism just because they can't get inside the park. And most time, most cases, i- 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 if some vandalism going on, I think they're gonna jump the fence anyway, unless you got bought, uh, some razor wire on top of it. It, it's not gonna deter, especially if you're gonna just seal off all the entrance to the park after 9 o'clock.
I said that, excuse me. I think in the beginning, I did say that I knew it wouldn't solve a problem, that they would probably get in. I didn't go into that detail. I was in hopes, and I still believe, that it would discourage some of the crime and some of the vandalism. If we're not able to put a fence around the park or lock it, may I ask two things? Number one, do something about locking the ball fields. Coaches and people that work with Dixie League wanna put hard work into their ball fields and make 'em look good, but knowing that, that they could be destroyed overnight, which they are periodically, they have no incentive to put their money nor their time and effort, just like Keep More House Beautiful. We feel like we would love to help in more ways than we can, but we cannot waste our money when we know overnight it can be ruined. However, with that in mind, I would like to ask if you would possibly consider putting more trash receptacles, locking up the ball fields, not necessarily the entire park, and by all means, lock up every restroom over there. They are a disgrace to Bastrop. They are filthy, and it's not Willie's fault or the Public Works' fault. They have refixed them and repaired them, and overnight, they're destroyed again. And it could be that it's happening during the ball games, just like Danny said. I don't know. It's a hard thing to monitor, just like I agree with all of that. But in respect to the community and out of respect to the Dixie League, out of respect to the ball players, out of respect to the parents, I wish you would give serious consideration in doing something about the restrooms and locking those ball fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. McKee, any last points on, now, we have, how many ball fields? We got Carter Park, we got Forest Park, there's a ball field out there?
Yes.
Dotson.
Dotson.
Okay. So, in, in fairness?
I thought she said Forest. Uh, yes, I'm okay as Forest.
Uh, also, we have Raph, but they don't play ball at Raph George Park?
No, ma'am, but, but, uh, they play ball at, at Griffin Park, they practice at Griffin Park, they practice at Forest, and they practice at Dotson. I serve at the pleasure of the mayor and the council, so whatever your desire is, I will do. Uh, my recommendation is that if we're gonna put some money into anything, let's put money into building, tearing down and building a new, new bathroom facilities. I, 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 I think Ms. Carpenter and I are both in complete agreement on that.
Okay.
And maybe we can get Keep More House Beautiful to get some matching funds for us. Uh, and, and we, I guess we could, especially at Carter, build a centrally located facility and close the rest of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McKee. Ms. Carpenter, I think this is a situation where we could have ongoing dialogue of how to improve. Certainly, nothing's gonna happen overnight, but it's gonna take a lot of agencies working together. Uh, Mr. Lawrence has mentioned one option here that, that I'll get with the chief, and we can look at that, and at a later date, we'll disclose what that is, but we are still working on some, some things. Appreciate your, your time and your commitment to Keep More House Beautiful, so we'll have some dialogue at a later time. All right. Item number nine, Resolution 12-1437, adopting a citizen participation plan to meet the citizen participation requirement of the section of 508 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this resolution and the following resolution is one that Waxman, which is our consultant on our federal money through the LCDBG, we have obtained a grant that the mayor mentioned to repair some sewer lines and around the house, high school area. And we have one in place, but it needs to be updated, so we ask to, for you to consider adopting this so we can be in compliance with our grant that we received.
This is standard procedure, as Ms. Goldman has indicated. I will entertain a motion on Resolution 12-1437.
So move.
Second. And moved, and second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, Resolution 12-1438, adopting a procurement policy to serve as guidelines for the procurement of supplies, equipment, construction services, and professional services for the LCDBG program as established in 24 C R F 85 dot 36 and state requirements. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is another one. This tells us how we're gonna buy our supplies, equipment, any kind of professional services, and it, it also serves not only for the grant we're working on now, but it'll serve for every grant until it's time to update again. If the state does any kind of amendments, then we'll come back and amend our others. And that's basically what we're doing with this too, is to be in compliance for our federal money.
At this time, I will entertain a motion on this resolution as defined by Ms. Goldman.
I make a motion, Mayor.
Properly moved by Mr. Moore?
Second.
And second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, appoint a commissioner to the Bath of Historic Commission, Jacob Post. Mr. Post here?
Mayor, I think he's on call tonight.
He's on, on call. We need to make an appointment to our Historic Commissioner Board. Do we have any Historic Board members here?
Yeah, I'll speak. What, what was, we had, um, Mr. Steve Gillum served for years, ever since it's been in existence. He was one of the original board members. He served for many years. He felt that it was time for him to pass the baton on down. This position's been open for several months. When I first, um, got the name of Jacob Post, I, I personally know him, but somebody had brought his name up to him. When I contacted him, he was fixing to get married in a month, and he didn't wanna commit right then. He asked me to give him some time, and I, I did. I, I let him get settled down, and, and I contacted him just to see if he'd give it some thought. He had a few questions, I answered them, and then he called me back this week and said that he thought he would enjoy doing that. So, um, he's eager to serve, and he asked me to express that he will do his best to serve the city well.
At this time, I will entertain a motion on this appointment. I salute and appreciate all of our board members. They serve, they're not compensated in a monetary fashion. I see Ms. Rogers is out in the, in the audience, and she has worked with us on several projects, and she serves on our zoning board. So I will entertain a motion on this appointment.
So move.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Are there any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have item number 12. Let me just recognize, Ms. Rogers, she was the recipient of an award for the City of Bastrop for her dedication for city services. She, she attended, I believe, all of our recovery plan meetings. She is a chartered member of our zoning board. If you just stand up, and I saw her participation in, in our city government is worthy of recognition, and we wanna thank you. Item number 12, Mr. Bruce Lowery and Ms. Kathy Harris, Lowery's, Lowery's Furniture. If you would, um, come to the podium, state what your, your concern is. State your name and your concern.
I'm Kathy Harris, I'm Mr. Lowery's daughter. Um, we have been financing vehicles for a few years now, but we didn't realize that we needed a special license to do that. Um, so now, we're in the place where we've gotta have it. And last July, the zoning laws changed us to residential, and we've been there since the seventies. And what we need is to be grandfathered in so that we can go ahead and get our license. I have a letter from the state showing that we've been doing this, but we have to have these licenses. We're not gonna have a car lot, we're not gonna be starting a new business, we're just gonna be conducting business, but we need that zoning compliance to continue.
Okay, uh, where are we on? I think for clarity, Ms. Lowery, did you want to say something in, in addition to?
I don't guess. I've been doing financing out there since, uh, the late seventies, and, uh, so it's, it's nothing new, but then we started getting these paperwork.
Okay, I, and I'll let Mr. Lee, our code enforcement officer, bring us up to date so that this council can, can make an assessment on, on what's going on here. But I think one thing that comes to mind, and probably to the minds of council members, by granting one license, is that automatically granting another? Is that making sense, Mr. Lawrence? If, if the license is granted to, well, you're asking for a special provision, actually.
Um, well, I, I won't have to have a different occupational license, I can still use the same one that we have, our business name won't change. So it's just the one license that I'm asking for.
The one license, but the car situation?
Yeah, it's the car. Mm-hmm. We're not gonna have a car lot, we're not gonna sell the cars, just finance.
Okay, would you help the, to decipher this, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, to answer your first question, if you grant a variance for, or, or grant authorization to deviate from, uh, whatever, whatever limitation is there now by, by way of the current zoning law that you have, and somebody else comes along later with the exact same type request or something very similar to it, and you say no to them, that does create a, a denial of equal protection under the law when you treat folks similarly situated differently. So you are on a course of setting a precedent when you agree to allow a non-conforming use or to grant a variance on something that is prohibited. So I do want you to keep that, that, that in mind. You know, I've, I've been looking at the paperwork here, a- and I'm a little bit confused. I need some clarity, because from what I saw here, I got the impression that we were talking about a used car business.
Yes.
You know? And I, I, I understood the statement just then to say that it's not a car lot, but nevertheless, I'm still getting the impression that it is a, an automobile business of some type. So I'm, I'm really here to listen and to get more information about what the exact use is, because I think you need that in order to be able to make an informed decision, one way or the other, 'cause I'm not clear on it right now.
Okay. So if, if can be some differentiation in granting the license, if the license is strictly to finance car, why is a variance needed? Is, is that a good summary of what's going on here?
In some respects, I mean, you're almost saying that you're just a financial institution like the bank is, if all that you're doing is financing. And, y- you know, I mean, may, maybe there is more to this, maybe, uh, you know, a city official does know more about the actual use. Like I said, I think we need to know more about what the exact use is that's being requested or turned down or whatever before we can make an informed decision about it.
Of course.
Mr. Lee, and if you'd just step aside, Ms. Harris, Mr. Lowery, and let's get, uh, some clarity. Some clarity on, excuse me.
In regards to, uh, Mr. Lowery's request, uh, to, for zoning, I took an application on August 25th of, uh, 2011, and in that initial application, he was requesting to, uh, get a zoning permit for used car business. And that's the?
That's the paperwork here.
That's the paperwork that I processed. Since, uh, I processed that and referred to the zoning code and indicated that the area that he was located in, uh, was residential, R S six, single-family residence, his application was denied. After the denial, then his usage changed, and he informed me that he was just gonna be financing, there would be no physical vehicles at that location. But initially, uh, he was more or less would be serving as strictly as financing in that, that, uh, in, in my opinion, may be a different type of business, but in R S six residential zoning, uh, businesses are, are not allowed by right, only residents. So we still have a different usage, but we still applying the same, uh, use, uh, for the zoning, for zoning purposes. And even though, I explained to Mr. Lowery, and I think he understood, that even though his business pre-existed zoning ordinance, he was allowed to continue because he was in business prior- he was allowed to continue because he was in business prior and during the time of the adoption of the ordinance. But this was a new venture, and it was precluded after July first of nineteen, of, uh, two thousand and eleven. And that was the basis for the denial, and eventually, uh, his appeal was processed, and, uh, he requested, uh, a zoning tax amendment on his appeal, which it was, uh, reviewed and held that, uh, basically that the original administrative interpretation was in accord with the ordinance.
Okay, um, hypothetically, let's say if, if the license was granted, even though the statement is that there are no plans for used cars, and, and suddenly the plan changed, what would prohibit that? Would granting that adjustment also grant the privilege of putting cars there?
It de, it depends on the exact adjustment that is granted.
Okay.
Because if it is of the type that would support the allowance of cars to be on the lot, then the answer is yes. I guess I have just two follow-up questions, if I may. The first one is, is there a change at all, uh, in the business activity that's go, that's been going on there heretofore? In other words, are we now talking about, if I'm appreciating this right, this is a different kind of a business versus the type of business that's been going on there already?
That's my interpretation of his request.
Next part of my question would be, what physical change in the premises or in the use of the premises would be necessary to facilitate this new business?
As he, uh, described it, there would be no change in physically. But, uh, my understanding is the city issues occupational license describing the type of business that, and if that business was not in operation during the time of the adoption of the ordinance and before the adoption, then it would not be, uh, have that usage after.
My last question, what type of business exactly has been going on there up to this point aside from this new venture that's being discussed? I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with the appliance part and, uh, maybe repair. I, I, I'm just trying to get some understanding of what?
We're already doing financing. We've already been doing financing forever. This is just, they have a whole different license for automobiles. That's the only difference.
They have a whole, excuse me, they have a whole new license to finance automobiles?
Yeah, automobiles is on a separate thing altogether. It's just, they just make the license separate.
So you weren't financing automobiles before?
Before the ordinance, yes, we are.
And you had a license to do that?
We wasn't aware that we had to have a different one.
Oh, okay.
So this would be basically like a loan company, basically?
In, in many respects, and probably, I think though now it's more formally maybe a loan company and something that is more geared directly toward financing vehicles.
That would, that would be different, yeah.
My question is, how does this fall up under the zoning law? Especially if there's no physical car lot there? Why do we have to?
Let, let me see, can I, and Mr. Lee, you, you correct me, I'm going to attempt to repeat back what I believe your rationale is. And this ties into what was said also about property owners. A different license is required for this activity that was discovered. And your rationale, as I understand you to be saying it is, okay, that means that now there is a different type of business that's going to be licensed to operate at that location as distinguished from the other types of businesses that have been properly licensed to operate there already. Hence, since you're talking about something new, that technically is a new use, and the existing use does not grandfather in necessarily a new use. That's the best way, I'm comprehending this. I'm not judging any part of it, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand what the issues are.
That was my interpretation of the ordinance.
Are, are we looking at dual licenses? Two different licenses, one is Lowery Furniture?
Having the other occupational licenses. We can use the occupational licenses that we already have.
But now I had a car lot there before, and I did my own financing. So this is not something brand new. I used to have a car lot with fifteen, twenty cars on it there. I think, uh, some of the people in here knows about that. I think one of them bought a car from me.
What are your actions?
As far as licenses and all of that. And that's the only difference, just the different requirements.
If you'll come back to the microphone, Ms. Harris, uh, Mr. Armstrong raised the question specifically, what is your request to this council? And I think, and when you answered that, I think Mr. Lee needs to come back and tell the process that you have gone through. What is your specific request?
Okay, I already went through the state. I've got all their requirements met. They had from profit and loss statements to truth and lending statements to all the different financing use for automobiles. And the only thing that I have left is the zoning. And they've told me that they would grant the license if I could get the zoning. So I just need?
They, meaning?
State.
Okay.
Estate. So we're not going to have, we don't even have the room to put a car lot. So it's just, we would just be financing.
Well, you would need, you would need us approved to make that decision, then?
Well, they require a form where you sign it and you say that we are in, that, um, we can do it according to your zoning, the state license. So I have a form that has to be filled out by you for the state. That is the only thing that I need.
Mind if we see the form?
Is that going to be con, consistent with the character of that particular area over there?
Well, that's our location, that's where we are.
The bottom part right there is the part that they want us to fill out for the zoning.
But I'm, I'm concerned. Are you all on a time constraint to get this done, or what?
We really are, because they're, they told us, they told us today that we had over six months, so now we've got to go to a hearing in Baton Rouge about it, because we were doing it. We didn't know that we had to have that specific license, so.
And also, we had to send four hundred dollars upfront, and I don't know how long that's going to fall.
Probably been about seven or eight months since I started. And in January, I kept calling up here, and I don't know, somehow it just got kind of forgot.
Ms. Harris, did they give you a deadline?
Did they give me a deadline?
Okay, if you'll step back to the mic, Ms. Harris.
They didn't actually give me a deadline. I just had to stay in touch with them, in which I have done it, but I've got letters here, um, of what we got in the mail yesterday. And I told them that we've been working on it, but it hasn't, uh, stopped this from happening.
Mr. Lee, would that fall under the same category, I mean, she, versus, car lot versus financing? Would that be considered the same thing, in your opinion, as far as the ordinances go?
As far as the zoning is, if it was, whether it's, if it's sales, whether it's on-site or off-site, and you're operating that business, it still would be, you would still be operating that business. My question would be, if you were doing business financing vehicles with the state prior or during the time of the transition from non-zoning to zoning, is this a new requirement that the state just require you, or, or what? Only thing I, I, I can be appreciative of, if, if the, uh, furniture business is grandfathered in, we have documentation that you were operating because you had a license and you had verification. You had a tax ID number, you had all that. But my rationale was that if the state requires this, this, this either is a new business and not a pre-existing business, unless the state can verify that this was something that they just started by adding to a already existing financing business.
I think that's the question.
See, that's, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, that's what's still, the, the, the refinancing part of it, or the financing part, I should say, uh, and, and you, you did this with the furniture, and you did it with vehicles. So the, the, there wasn't, the, the license didn't cover all of it?
No. Well, we can still go by our same tax ID number. We can still use our same occupational license. We just have to have a specific license, I guess, to show that we have what it takes to do it, and our forms are correct. And we've got all that taken care of.
So you're using the same tax ID number for both entities?
And, Mr. Lee, this is some, this is something that the state has changed recently, is that what we're? I mean, all, all of a sudden now you have to have a specific license for each thing? Well, I guess, I guess that's the question, I mean, so, I mean, how do I put this? You were, you were financing things without license to finance it?
Yes, the motor vehicles.
Okay.
Physically, there's not going to be a car lot there. Physical, no. But the state require that you get a license, that, that, that we grant you a permit based on the zoning permit? For the, for the, for the license to sell cars?
To finance.
The finance car?
License to finance, not sell, we don't have cars to sell.
Finance cars, oh, okay.
Now, with the states, well, that's kind of throwing me off about the state.
It, it started a few years ago, and Aaron White needed financing for his vehicles. And that's where it kind of began. We weren't aware that we had to have a specific license for motor vehicles different from anything else.
And you have to be in a particular zoning area.
We, we require a zoning area.
We require a zoning area.
Doug, Doug. Yeah, I think, Doug, we're going to have to, who has to put you back in the middle of all this?
Just, just one person at a time. I believe I heard Mr. Moore was first.
Doug, I got a question. Even if we consider doing this, I'm not speaking for everyone, but if we consider doing this, and we did give her the okay, is there any kind of way we could put in the ordinance that, uh, she would not be able to sell her cars on the premises?
That, by the way, you know, part of the, the thinking that I had was if you went in that direction, that would be one of the recommendations that I would have, because that's really the use issue that I know that the zoning, uh, commission is concerned about, the use of the property for a lot in that area around Van. And I understand, Mr. Lowery, and I remember Mr. Lowery, uh, actually, I think, having motor vehicles there in the past. But if you got a cessation of use, if that's stopped, you know, and now you're, and that, that happens to be one of the things, I think Mr. Lee can attest to this, about zoning. You know, if you have an existing use going on, when you implement zoning, you're sort of grandfathered. Then when you have a cessation of use, and then you come back, then all of a sudden you're not grandfathered anymore, that's a problem. So I would, I would almost say if we go down this road, that that's exactly what you want to do. Because a, as I understand it, it is a matter of being able to do financing-type activity. One of the other things I would say, I, I looked at those forms, and I mean, those, I, I understand your point. You look at those forms, and it's not very clear to follow exactly what it is that the state, you know, this, this, this whole requirement. So I was trying to comprehend it, sitting here reading it, and it was very hard to do. But if you made an approval, it would be based upon what you just said.
Okay, Mr. Lowery, you have a question?
I was just agreeing.
Okay, now, let me pose this question. You make, um, loans for vehicles. The person defaults on the loan, you repossess the vehicle, where are you going to put it? Let's say if you have two, three cars that you have to repossess?
It would go back to the dealership who originally had it.
Explain that to me. If you're financing?
I'm not the car dealer, I'm just doing the financing.
Oh, okay.
But the problem with that is, though, you're the lien holder on the asset.
Yes.
And if you're not paid, you're the one, you, you're the one that has the right to take it. Perhaps what would happen, Mr. Lowery, I guess you would say, okay, well, we'll resell this car, whatever, so to go back to the lot. I, I could see that. But, but I think to your point there, that, that is something that has to be considered. And if there is an approval, that would have to also be made a part of this, that, that if you, that if you seize that asset because of a default, then there's not going to be any housing or warehousing of the seized property at the location.
Yes.
It will not be put at our premises.
And, and I, I understand what you're saying, Ms. Harris. I think the position of the council is, in granting the license, would they automatically be granting something else unless there are stipulations? And if there are stipulations, how much they are willing to, to wade out there and, uh, deviate from what we're trying to accomplish? I believe, listening at, the council members need a little more time to get their arms around what's being requested so they can be clear on, on the decision that they are making. I believe that, does that succinctly express your sentiments, that you need a little more time to digest this? Or are you ready to make a decision today?
No, I, I mean, I agree, Mary, the, the, the hardest part that I'm, I'm having, Doug and Mr. Lee, maybe you can help me with this, is if they were financing cars before the zoning, but wouldn't require to have a separate license for it?
Right.
I, I don't understand how it cannot possibly be grandfathered in, that's all I'm asking.
I had the same?
Is there any way it can be?
I had the same thought, but then when I looked at these forms, the, the, the forms are what throw this thing off. Because they talk about, uh, the, 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 I guess, the financier being a part of a business that is zoned a certain way. And so I'm going, well, wait a minute, what, what does that mean? And I, and so now I understand why you had to come and make the zoning request. I also understand why, Mr. Lee, in other words, I understand the, I understand both sides. It's, it's this that, that prevents me from answering your question, because I'm trying to wrap my, my, my mind around exactly what's the state doing here. Because actually, when you just look at it, I see how you could do financing and not have any cars. I mean, G M A C and other people do it every day, and I don't see a big issue. Because I think the real issue that Mr. Lee and everybody else would have is if you're going to park lots, cars over there on a lot. So, y, y, you know, Mr. Lee, unless you have a particular, uh, uh, view about this on not, um, you know, approving it one way or the other, I, I, still, I need time really to, to understand the state's point of view. But if you did anything, it would be some type of provisional approval if you did that, but subject to no vehicles at all being there, whether they're for resale, for warehousing, or for whatever. I mean, that's almost what you'd have to do. And it would be strictly limited to, uh, to, uh, to a, to a financing operation.
Doug, at the beginning of this zoning, um, apparatus that was given to us, uh, back in the summer, I, I think I heard- I, I think I heard that we have the, uh, right as a, as a city council to make allowances.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
That's right.
Okay.
And, and I do want to re-urge the point that I made earlier. When you grant variances or allowances or exceptions, be prepared to do it for everyone that's similarly situated. Because if you have folks who come up with the exact same thing, and you say yes to one and you say no to the other, that's, that's potentially a denial of equal protection to the one that you say no to. And there are actual court cases that say that. So you have to be careful about that. But I, I guess, I, I do understand the Lowry's point, uh, about this thus far.
Um, is council ready to make a decision?
Yes.
Do you have a motion, Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, make a motion that we grant Mr. Lowry and Ms. Harris this audience.
A, a variance, basically?
Yes, with, with stipulations. Mr. Lowry, you said there would be no cars on your premises at, uh?
Uh, I can't say there won't be no cars.
What? Let me, let me, I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm talking, I'm speaking of one that you financed and it gets repossessed. It will not be on your property. That's what I'm asking. Okay, it won't be on your property, though?
No.
On Van Street.
On Van Avenue.
Van Avenue.
Okay, well, I, I.
Well, can I help you clarify? No cars for resale, no cars that are being repossessed? No cars that are a part of the assets that are concerned with the business operation that's being approved? Uh, I mean, the owners can drive their own car there, whatever the case may be. That's not a part of this. We just need to be clear about that.
Correct.
Are you all comfortable with that? Mr. Lee, do you have a, and it, you know, it's like walking down the aisle, getting married, speak now if ever hold your peace. I just want to make sure, see if you have a.
It's all, it's all of the council is not.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I, we have a motion?
Continue with my motion. I'll make the motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are we clear on recording how this motion was stated?
Yes, it is a motion to grant a variance, subject to the stipulations that there will be no motor vehicles housed, uh, at the location for resale, uh, also for warehousing or in connection with, uh, uh, anything where they are repossessed. Uh, in other words, it's been represented to us that there is no need to have motor vehicles on the premises for the purpose of granting this variance. Therefore, there will be none related to this activity.
Okay. And should any of those things occur, that, that gives us the city the right to?
It's a violation of the zoning.
Violation of the zoning.
Okay. I, I heard a second. Was it you, Mr. Lowry?
It was.
Properly moved in second. Are there any questions, discussions, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number thirteen, Mr. Deepak Patel, Best Western.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deepak Patel. I'm from Best Western. I've been living here for eleven years. And, uh, I have a big lot behind my hotel. And I want to put a manufactured home, nice home, back there for my family. And, uh, I get to know that it is not part of, uh, commercial corridor. It is not allowed. So I want to request you, uh, variance or grant the permit.
Okay, uh, you've heard Mr. Patel's request, and I think out of, uh, to give you a balanced, uh, approach to information on this, I'm gonna ask Mr. Lee again if he will come back and if you'll step aside for just a minute, Mr. Patel. And then, and let's explain what's going on here.
Uh, to the council, all present, Mr. Patel's situation is somewhat similar to Mr. Lowry's in that it involves usage of property. And Mr. Patel's, as an innkeeper motel, is located in a, uh, in a commercial corridor. And it's strictly zoned for commercial businesses. The only type of, uh, not a residence, but the only type of housing that can be placed in there would be an apartment house sitting. But what he's requesting you put in this particular area is referred to as a single-family residence. And, uh, that is prohibited. No single-family residents are allowed within a commercial corridor. Those that were in there prior to the area being zoned are allowed to remain in there. But no new construction can be put in there or moved in or built. And that was the issue in reference to, uh, his request. He made his request about three days before Mr. Lowry, and it was denied. It was brought before review and review, uh, commission denied also by, uh, reinforcing the, uh, the administrative decision that was made based upon the ordinance and the usage of that particular type property.
Okay, you have, um, heard the presentation by Mr. Patel, and you have heard, uh, the presentation by our code enforcement officer. And, Mr. Lawrence, you want to reiterate the ramifications that are associated with this particular request?
If you approve this request and you get a similar request of this type from others who are in the business corridor and you say no to them, you will have an equal protection under the law problem. So, uh, the, the whole matter about setting a precedent is something that is very important for you to keep in mind when you grant variances and exceptions to the zoning provisions that you have. And, um, of, of course, too, you know, these things are sort of, uh, the, the whole reason for having a plan does, uh, you know, there's a specific reason for it. You want to keep that in mind. I, I wanted to get one clarification, though, if I could, from Mr. Lee. Did it matter at all that we were talking about manufactured housing versus a, uh, you know, a home that, that is just built from the ground up?
A manufactured home or a modular home is still classified the same as a, a single-family home. You can have a $300,000, two-story house.
Right.
All within the same category.
But now I know that there are some instances, though, where manufactured homes may be prohibited by zoning, perhaps. I mean, I may, I, I don't know whether our code goes that far, but I defer to you on that. So this is just purely the residential nature of it, not whether it's manufactured or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Need to add a few points, if I could.
Mr. Patel, would you, you'll come a little closer to the microphone?
The hotel is located completely, all the frontage has been used. This is the back of my hotel. You would never know it. Is it behind? And I have no other access but my hotel. I would never use that back part of my hotel unless I expand it, which I doubt that I will do it. If I was gonna do it, I would have done by now. So that particular part is away from any other facility. There is nothing in the way. And I'm not gonna make use of it at all.
Okay, council members, you have heard, um, three different points of view. You've heard Mr. Patel, you've heard our code enforcement, you've heard the legal aspect of this. And I think, uh, one difference in, in that you have granted, even though it's a provisional or, or conditional variance to the prior request, it's probably based on the fact that that was an existing business and financing was going on there. And, and you were still trying to maintain that same level of residency in that area. So the difference here, as you take into consideration what is being requested, is that a residence is gonna be established behind a business. So I, I.
Yeah, I, I, I see him as different. I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that one is better or worse than the other, but I see this as, I, I see these as different items.
I do.
You know, myself.
Can, can I ask Mr. Lee a question?
Sure.
If you don't mind, Mr. Lee. What did you say, again, could be built in this area?
Uh.
An, an apartment?
Apartments are allowable for that area, but.
Apartments are allowed?
Right.
Okay, and then there's no stipulation, uh, on, okay, that, that's, so a single-family house couldn't be built there?
No.
Okay, according to our zoning?
According to our zoning, there's no special permit, there's no variance, no allowances for a single-family residence. They're just out of the picture altogether.
And what stipulates apartments?
It was part of the, the zoning. They allowed that to be placed in that commercial corridor.
And I guess you can argue that they are commercial, they generate rent, you know, that, that, that's probably one of the.
Well, that, that was my next question. What stipulates it being an apartment? Did you just say apartment, or?
It says apartments, and, uh, I have a picture of what it would have to look like, and it has to be multi-story according to the zone.
I have a question for Mr. Patel.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Would you be interested in anything that Mr. Lee does mention?
No, because I have hotels right there. That's sort of the purpose to be, you know? That what, what he is talking about, it is already in place. The hotel is serving the community. I mean, what other purpose I could put? I, I don't want to put apartment back there because this is short-term housing that I'm providing to the guests.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Uh, where's your resident? Do you live in the hotel, or?
Yes, I do reside, uh, reside at the hotel.
Only resident you have?
I'm sorry?
Only resident you have is?
Yes, yes, that's true. Yes. I have two daughters growing up, and, you know, I really need some more space. And I decided to stay here. I do not like to move, but, you know, certainly, as we talked, we are shortage of tax money, you know, that certainly will increase some tax dollar, too.
Council members, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, um, Mr. Patel has made a request to this council. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion is in.
If you so desire to, to grant this variance?
Mr. Patel, I think I speak for myself and the rest of the council members that we greatly appreciate your business here in Bastrop. You have a beautiful place. You really do. But this is different from the other case. I understand it's your property. But if we allow you to put a house on it, then we gotta allow houses to go up everywhere. And I apologize, I'm sorry, but we can't do it.
Okay, so I can build a house there? It's like, you say that apartment buildings are allowed, but it's, it's, you cannot build a house.
That's according to the zoning ordinance, yes, sir, Mr. Patel. That's right. No houses, only apartments.
No.
And I'm sorry.
Losing, you know, that's a completely frontage area. Business is there. It's, I'm not adding anything in there. My place is used for particular use, and I'm not asking for any other use in there. It's just part of the place I have it. I'm not, that, that's what I'm requesting, you know?
Yes, sir. I understand that, Mr. Patel, and I believe the position of, of the council is that if they grant this deviation, then they are opening themselves up for other similar requests. Uh.
Yeah.
So we, we do not have a motion on it. Mr. Nation has expressed his opinion, his feelings. So, Mr. Lawrence, can we safely say this dies for the lack of a, a second, a, a motion?
Yes, ma'am. As the, uh, presiding officer, y- y- you, you can say that because there is insufficient time for a motion to come forward, and none has. And there is no need to offer a motion at all unless you intend to grant a variance. So that's, that's where we are.
This council has chosen not to, to act on the request, Mr. Patel. Thank you. Item number fourteen, Ms. Kay King.
Thank you, Mayor and Ward Walderman. I, I know it's getting late, so I'll be brief tonight. We, um, it has been a very busy month. We have had a lot of activity, and I appreciate, uh, wish Ms. Carpenter was still here because, uh, I was in a meeting and, and I was asked how we were doing so well in Bastrop, and I said I felt that it was because of the strong volunteers that we have in this community and the community pride that we have here. And, um, I commend them for everything that they do that makes my job easy, uh, easier. But, um, I would like to report that we did meet on the Ditto Building this month, and we came to, um, we, we discussed some things. We're not ready to move forward on the bids on that just yet. But I did have a couple of calls this week about the building, and I would, would like to see us try to get that, uh, moving. And it, it was very helpful having, having the appraisal and being able to give people a prize. And, um, so that there is still interest in that building. And, um, you know, it has, like I said, it has been very active this month, and including some things that, um, Mr. Eldon, uh, discussed about the airport, that we've had some interest in the airport. And, um, I'd like to do whatever we can from the standpoint of our organization to try to increase the air traffic in there. And, um, I have offered, uh, him, we, we did some advertising before, and I have offered that to him again that we might try to put together some advertising. And I had, um, some people fly into the airport this month. So, um, there is, there is, um, a need to, to, um, support our airport and make that the best that we can. But, uh, unless someone has some specific questions about what economic development this month, I might close at that. And, uh, because it's been a long night. Very interesting.
Thank you, Ms. King. Do you have any questions for, for Ms. King?
No.
And we have had some dialogue about the Ditto Building. Um, we really want the public to know that Ditto, Ditto literally, is on our radar, and we're moving as quickly as we can within the boundaries of, of the laws that govern us. Appreciate all the research that you do, Ms. King.
Thank you.
At this time, and Ms. Goldman, have we covered everything?
Yes, we have. I think so.
Okay. Thank you, council members. It is a pleasure to, to work with, with each of you as we work to move the city of Bastrop forward. At this time, if there's no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion, Mayor. Second.
Oh, my, thank you. Are there any questions, discussions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned.